Your Honor, Arnold Zuniga from the Lord is Peace Church is going to do the invocation. Please continue standing for the pledges.
Good morning and thank you for such a wonderful privilege. Let us pray. Father, we come before you this wonderful day to thank you for the many blessings that you've given us in our life. And Lord, your word directs us that we pray for those in authority so that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life with godliness and dignity. So in doing so, I ask for protection, blessing upon the commissioners, the county judge, everyone that is here today. I pray that you give them wisdom in their decision making so that the people of this county will be blessed. And Father, again, protection for the commissioners, the judge and their families and everyone here. We pray your blessing upon this meeting today as we give you the glory in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen and amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have, where's our minute ticker? We have all commissioners present, present, sorry, president. It is Wednesday, July 17th. We are at 9:01 Leopard Street in the Nuasis County Courthouse. And it is 9:05 and I call this meeting to order. Do we have any announcements of disclosures of conflicts of interest? If there is none, you can also disclose that at the time the item comes up. First off, we have item E, introduction of county extension agent. Mr. Montemeyer, I believe you're going to introduce for us this morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to be here this morning. I wanted to go ahead and introduce our selection. And finally, for our horticulture position, we have a vacancy of a Nuasis County Horticulture Agent. I want to introduce to y'all Ms. Daisy Castillo. Ms. Castillo has been with us for the last eight years in the Better Living for Texan Program. She has worked with the Growing Nurse and Healthy Communities Project, leading about, I would say about 10 different locations within Nuasis County and over 120 garden beds. And she leads that program. She's got an excellent skill set associated with horticulture. And now she's going to lead our Horticulture Program in Nuasis County with the Master Gardener Program among with all the outreach efforts that she's be able to be tasked with. So I wanted to introduce her to you. She will start on Monday. And if you have any questions for her, we'd like to entertain any questions.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
I'm here also with Norma, who's also our county administrator. And then also Daisy's mom is here. I forgot her, I didn't forgot her name, but Daisy's mom here to join us as well.
Welcome.
Daisy's mom.
And this position will also be with the same budgeted salary that Nuasis County is so gracious in supporting our program with.
Well, thank you. And I guess this isn't welcome since you've been with us, but congratulations on the change of job duties.
She's transferring over from a strictly a state position that you all allow to have this in this county to a cost share program with the state and the county.
Even better. Congrats. Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Did you want to say anything too or anything? Please, you're welcome to have the microphone.
All right. Thank y'all for having me here today. I am excited to start working with the county here again and working with the future of horticultural in this county and hopefully hoping to increase the volunteer programs and also increase the educational side of horticultural for the community as well. So if y'all have anything that y'all want to give me information of, hey, we should have these kind of events, please come and look for me at the county office where we're at and my door is always open for you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
We're good. Appreciate you being here this morning, all of you. Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Item F and resolutions. Number one, first up, we have in recognition of St. John Paul II High School Track Team 2024, their state championship. Francis is going to read that? Yes.
In recognition of St. John Paul II High School Track Team 2024 State Championship, whereas St. John Paul II High School Track Team competed in the Texas Association of Private and Parochial Schools 4A State Track Meet in Waco, Texas on Friday, May 3rd, 2024. Whereas St. John Paul II High School Student Athletes Senior Armando Rivera placed first in the triple jump, second in the long jump, and is a four-time state champion in the triple jump. Senior Robin Crane placed second in the long jump. Junior Grace Becker placed third in the high jump. And freshman Teddy Chavez placed third in the high jump. Whereas in March 2024, Armando Rivera competed in the Nike Indoor Nationals at the Armory in New York City where he placed 10th out of 24 in the triple jump. In this competition, Armando jumped a total of 46.03 feet. Armando also competed in the long and triple jump at the Nike Outdoor Nationals at Hayward Field at the University of Oregon in June of 2024 where he placed eighth. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County, does hereby congratulate the St. John Paul II High School Track Team on their 2024 state championship title and further encourage the citizens of Nuasis County to join the court in celebrating the John Paul II Track Team for their accomplishment this season, duly adopted by vote of the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County, Texas on this 17th day of July 2024.
Make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. And I believe Coach Ramirez, you're here, would you like to come up and say a few words first or if you have, the students want to speak, they're more than welcome as well.
I don't think they do.
Yeah.
But just want to say thank you for the invitation. These kids have worked hard our year. We have Coach Williams here as well. He does the boy side, but we've been working together for the most part. So we had a lot of district champions, we had some regional qualifiers, and the season was capped off with these four. I know Robin couldn't make it today, but you know, Mondo being four time and then Teddy's his first time ever high jumping and he was able to compete, almost didn't get out of district, but he worked hard and got third. Grace hadn't jumped in a couple of years, so having her back, getting third was good as well. She PR'd at state. So just thank you. We really appreciate everything. Mondo.
They don't want to. We want to congratulate you, especially from the court, not only in your dedication to your extracurricular activities, your dedication to your studies as well. And we wish you all the best in your future endeavors as well. Thank you for being here today and congrats for a well-deserved. Thank you.
Want to take a picture?
Yes. Can we get y'all to come up to the front? Sorry. I didn't know if anybody else wanted to speak or anything. Any other commissioners?
Congratulations. Congratulations, young man. Congratulations, young lady. Congratulations.
Got more years or you're all done? One more year, so you'll be seen.
See you.
Three more. Great.
So we'll see you, we'll see you here again next year.
Congratulations. Okay. Keep it up. Hopefully you call us.
Coach?
Ben's on that track with John Paul when he was a top fall.
Congratulations.
Item number two is in recognition of Port Aransas Chief of Police, Mr. Scott Burrows, for his years of service and wishing him the best in his retirement. And Emily is going to read that one.
Whereas Scott Burrows began his law enforcement career as a cadet with the Travis County Sheriff's Office on April 11th, 1983. During his 26-year career with the Sheriff's Office, he worked his way through the ranks as a patrolman, detective, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, and Law Enforcement Bureau Major. Whereas on January 2nd, 2009, Burrows was sworn in as the 22nd Chief of Police for the city of Port Aransas. Chief Burrows built a team of law enforcement professionals empowering them with the discretion to implement a community-oriented policing philosophy of enforcing the spirit of the law when possible and the letter of the law when necessary. Whereas he routinely corroborated with the Nuasis County Precinct 4 Constable's Office, the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office, and the other city, county, state law enforcement partners for assistance during major events. These philosophies served the community well during his tenure that included the influx of more than 120 million tourists, 16 spring breaks, response to and recovery from Hurricane Harvey and COVID-19. Whereas on June 30th, 2024, Burrows retired as the longest continuously serving Chief of Police for the city with 15 years, five months, and 28 days of service with the Port Aransas Police Department. In total, his career spanned 41 years, two months, and 20 days over five different decades serving under five sheriffs, three city managers, and four mayors. Now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners Court in Nuasis County, does hereby recognize Port Aransas Chief of Police Scott Burrows on his wonderful career and retirement.
Thank you, Emily.
So moved there.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. I'm sure Commissioner Chesney wants to speak. Scott, did you want to speak for a second too?
Judge, Commissioners Court, truly honored to be here today. I appreciate the recognition. This is the first time I've appeared in front of Commissioners Court as a civilian, but it's, it's actually pretty refreshing. So thank you very much. If I learn nothing else over my career, it's to keep it brief. So I appreciate you.
Judge, thank you. Chief, thank you very much. I just wanted to say it's been an honor and a pleasure to work closely with you over the years. I don't think anybody will ever forget the times spent in Port Aransas that you've had and the impact that you've had on that community. Certainly, if not the most impactful was during Harvey and everything that we all had to go through during that time. That was a very emotional, difficult time for the citizens and you were stalwart in that community. You did a wonderful job in keeping people calm and cool and collected in a very, very difficult time. To be able to withstand and do something, anything for 15 straight years is amazing. And certainly being the police chief in Port Aransas, I kind of enjoyed the, what was it, 16 spring breaks? That alone, that ought to get you some combat pay for sure. Because that's quite a time in Port Aransas for sure. But in all seriousness, thank you very much for your commitment. You know, we really appreciate it. I know how much the community loves you and your wife and everything that y'all have done for that community. So I, it's an honor to have you here today. It was, it was an honor to be able to put this together for you. And I know everybody up here, I'm not speaking for everyone, but I know everybody up here wishes you the best and congratulates you on an outstanding career, not just in Port Aransas, but as that resolution reflected, your law enforcement and your public service for many, many, many years. So thank you. Thank you on behalf of a grateful county. We appreciate everything you've done and we wish you nothing but the best. And I know you're probably going to, you know, not be living here anymore and I understand that, but I hope you'll come back. I know you will come back and visit a lot and please keep in touch because I appreciate your friendship and the commitment that you've made to this community. So thank you very much, sir.
Very well said. And I just want to echo those comments and knowing you personally like I did before and living in Port Aransas during Harvey and the leadership you showed and the leadership you've shown throughout all of this and your wife's support and all of the many entities and many organizations that she helped with for every citizen over there, helped raise funds for homes and people that needed it and everything. I mean, your family will be dearly missed and we wish you all the best, but we hope you come back to see us often. Yes. We have a.
Don't come spring break, okay?
I bet. I bet. Nobody that lives there.
And if you do, you better come packing, right? Yeah, right?
But we have this for you too and we'd like to take a photo with you before you leave too. So, and Charlene, you too.
We can get one of the girls to take the photo. Yeah.
You'll be back. Take it down with you, man.
One, two, three. Congratulations.
Very good.
Moving on to item number three and recognition of Shark Appreciation Week, the week of July 14th. And Peyton is going to read.
Whereas we have a responsibility as stewards of our natural resources to protect our marine environments and ensure the sustainability of their fragile ecosystems for generations to come. And whereas we recognize that sharks are apex predators to marine ecosystems, serving as keystone species that keep the entire food web in balance. And whereas the Center for Sport Fish Science and Conservation at the HART Research Institute for the Gulf of Mexico Studies at Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi works to provide the best, most advanced science to gather as much knowledge about sharks and their life history as possible to best inform management of Gulf fisheries. And whereas through innovative tracking devices, sampling techniques, powerful partnerships, citizens, scientists, and community support, Sport Fish Center scientists have been able to provide sound data for fisheries management and educational outreach for the angling community throughout Texas and beyond. And whereas increased awareness of shark behaviors from this research has led to improve shark populations in the Gulf of Mexico, which in turn improves sports fisheries and marine ecosystems. And whereas for Shark Awareness Day, we wish to celebrate the advances in shark research and come together to educate the community on the ocean, on these ocean ambassadors. And now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Nuasis County, does hereby proclaim the week of July 14th each year to be named Shark Appreciation Week in Nuasis County and urges all citizens to recognize the valuable role that sharks play in our oceans. Furthermore, we do hereby commend the HART Research Institute and Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi for their dedication to sustainable Gulf of Mexico and to educating the next generation of Gulf leaders, duly adopted by the vote of Commissioners Court of Nuasis County, Texas on the 17th day of July 2024.
So moved, Judge.
Second.
We have lots of seconds, whoever you want to choose. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes and it looks like we have some speakers. We have the mascot, everything. We're awesome.
We do. We have Izzy here today. She will be interpretive dance her thank you speech. I'm Dr. Kessley Banks. I am a research scientist at the Sport Fish Center and I'm here to speak on half of the university and Izzy as well as HRI and the Sport Fish Center. And we want to thank you for making this Shark Appreciation Week. They are very important ambassadors in our ocean and if you want a healthy ocean, we want them in there. And so we really appreciate you guys taking the time and acknowledging their importance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And yes, we have this for you as well and would love to take photos. Yes.
So do we know Islanders on next year Shark Week? Can we already spoil that or do we know?
We are in negotiations, but it takes some time.
Okay.
You should maybe be friends.
Hello. Hi, five minutes.
Sorry. Didn't mean to like, you know. I can't get my Izzy's thing.
All right. Y'all want to come in on the ends a little more? And see, so if you want to come in like this window right here. Right. If y'all just want to scoot just a tad this way. All right. Okay, ready everybody? One, two, three. Have we gave all the shakas? The shakas up?
Izzy's not smiling.
One, two, three.
One more, you guys, sorry.
One more.
One more real quick. Sorry. Sorry. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Got it. Thank you all.
Thank you all very much. Thanks for being here. Thank you very much. I tell you, the chunky is like, that's my, my favorite time of year. And I'm so proud to see the Islanders on there for a year. Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're uninsured.
I know. I feel so deflated that.
I'm going to preview all agendas from now, just for that purpose only. I'll have it ready next year.
Okay, moving on to item G, public comment. When you go to the podium, please remember to state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. We cannot answer or answer questions or speak back. So if we don't say anything, don't get offended or anything. This is public comment for you to tell us, other than for us to tell you we'll put it on an agenda or to say where to go. Number one is Maria Castilla.
Maria Castilla, 5387 Rivera Street, Robstown, Texas 78380. Well, my husband's on there too, so you can.
Good morning, Your Honor and County Commissioner. My name is Gregorio Castilla, 5387 Rivera Street, Robstown, Texas 78380.
Hello. This is specifically for Mr. Mahrez, Commissioner Mahrez. We live on the Amistad area. We do not have public water available. There is a, the public water is a block away from our area and our community does not have. I've come several times to speak to you since 2020 and we're hoping that you can hear us. We're going to keep coming every year or keep trying to make an appointment with you. We're hoping that you can consider to adopt our area. We do live there. We recite there. We have electricity, but we do not have water available and we're using every means to have, we have a 500 gallon tank and we have a, some kind of, I don't even know what it is.
We just buy potable water from a regular rental company that brings us water.
We need you to speak in the microphone.
In the wintertime, it's difficult and in the summertime, it's difficult. We have elderly people in our area. We have children in our area. We pay our taxes. We, we work very, very hard and we're hoping that you can give it, get attention to our area. We're close to Banquetti. We're right there. Everybody's behind us. We're kind of speaking for them as well because their work, some people are working today and we're going, like I'm heading to work after this. We're just hoping that you can hear us out and consider to adopt our area and give us some time to speak to you. We went to your office yesterday and left, spoke to your assistant or clerk. And she did tell us that you go to Robstown and you have an office there too. Whatever works, we'll go out there. We just want you to hear us out and we're hoping that you, we're praying to God that you do consider giving attention and helping us out. We would really appreciate it. We're living, we're living there, so it's difficult. But you know, God bless you and thank you all for hearing us out. And if there's anything that we can do in our part, let us know and we'll, you know, we'll work with you. But we're hoping that you work with us too. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you.
We said what we wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know you were signed up as well, so I was going to give you additional time, but if you're done, then that's good.
Yeah, of course. Well, yeah, like my wife was saying, you know, we reside there. It's a small community. Like I said, we have elderly people. We have children that go to school that the bus can't go in there because there's no road. It's just a caliche. Some of them have to walk like half, half a block just to get to the main road to get picked up to go to school. They're actually caked up with mud when it rains and there's people that work out there late. They kind of give them rides to make sure that they go to school. I've given my neighbors rides sometimes when I go late to work. If I have a chance to, I help out that way. But everybody helping out is a community out there. It's kind of hard, especially the elderly and the kids that, you know, they want to go to school and they got new tennis shoes and they're just caked up with mud and they kind of doubt themselves who's going to go to school with the mud, muddy shoes, you know? It's hard. It's, we're just trying to make a better community and, you know, help each other out. And that's why we're here today to see if you, the County Commissioner, Court and Your Honor, y'all could hear us out and try to see where we could start and make a better community out there and livable for everybody. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, the lines got redrawn, so my area doesn't represent Banquetti anymore, but I have taken calls on that and will continue to work with the court on trying to find a resolution to that. Thank you. I, I'm just clarifying. I'm not, I can't get into a discussion with you. I'm just trying to clarify that that's not an area that I represent, so.
I've come to the courthouse and I just don't know who can help us. If it's not you, like, I don't know. Nobody's.
It's not, but it's not in my precinct anymore, so I'm just trying to clarify that.
Okay. Well, if there's guidance that you could give us on our appointment, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Numbers, the next person to speak is Betty Cranford.
Well, I'm back. So with that being said, the first thing I want to do is simply remind y'all that we.
Name and address and speak into the microphone, please.
Betty Cranford, 3802 Willmont, Corpus Christi. We have asked numerous times and this, just as a friendly reminder that we're still here to ask you not to provide tax abatements to a certain company. In addition to that, with your ARPA funds, there is a concern that we have regarding some of those that, that we met with Mr. Mahrez about. And all I can do, I'm not going to say anything bad. I'm just going to let you know that there are wolves in sheep's clothing and you need to be very much aware of that and who you're helping. And so that's basically all I have to say. You know, we just wanted to act as a reminder. We hadn't been here for a while. And then the other with events that occurred since then, I felt like y'all needed to be aware of something and have a warning about it. And I think you'll know, you know what I'm talking about. There's, there was some stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on public comment that did not have the opportunity to sign in? Then that concludes our public comment section. There's nobody online, I missed, right? Sorry. No, that concludes. So now moving on to item H, our board appointments. The first one up is the Nuasis County. The first one up is the Nuasis County Coastal Parks Board. We had a temporary resignation from Ms. Walling and she rescinded that resignation and does plan to stay. In the meantime, we did get one application, but I would make the motion to accept her letter rescinding her resignation and keep MK Walling on that board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, or any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign.
And Judge, related item to that, can we get maybe something from the county attorney's office, or, I don't know who in our, in our, in our staff or fellow elected officials can help us get some clarification on the issues out there? I know that there were some concerns that were brought up in that area and so they kinda were brought up to me, so I know that there's just some challenges, right? As far as the board and makeup of the board, I'm glad to hear that there's not any, anyone resigning, but it kind of tied into that, so maybe we can connect offline after the meeting?
Absolutely, I, I'm not filled in on this, so I don't know what the questions are, but I'll meet with you at any time.
This individual, her resignation though, was a move to take care of her mother and her, they worked it out with her sister or something, so she's staying in town, so...
She's only to December anyway, right?
Yeah, she would've still... Okay. Item number two, the Nuasis County Emergency Service District, number four, and... There's a vacant position. One letter of resignation, we have two applicants, Barbara Jones and Thomas Dullen. It is a partial term expiring December 31st, 2024. And yes, Commissioner Hernandez, did you wanna speak? This is in your district.
Yes, Judge, I spoke to Ms. Jones and she showed interest. That's Barbara Jones, right?
Yes.
She showed interest in doing this type of work for ST4, and I recommend her. Second.
Are either one of them here today? No. We have a motion and a second to appoint Barbara Jones. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you. And that is for a partial term ending in December. Moving on to the consent agenda, does any commissioner have any consent item that they wish to pull for further discussion? If you do, please let me know. I would like to pull item I. Are there any others, anyone? And I would make, make a motion to pass the consent agenda with the exclusion of item I for further discussion.
So, a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the motion passes. And I pulled item I just to give some recognition to some people. Betty Jean Longoria worked on this on her own to reach out to these people to get a vehicle for JJ. It's, it's a thing he's needed for a while. She went on her own, she talked to the Port of Corpus Christi, we'd like to thank them. We'd like to thank the Edgar Schill Foundation, Mike Shaw Toyota, and Betty Jean herself very much for the work and the efforts in getting this vehicle donated in full to Nuasis County for JJ's use and all of the great work he does for our veterans. So just want to, wanted to pull that out, just to make those comments and be able to give credit where credit is due. She works very hard out there at the veteran cemetery as well. JJ works very hard and these people wanted to be a part of that. In clarification, want to make sure every one of my commissioners know there wasn't a commissioner that went out and solicited these funds from any one of these. We have a policy and a rule, this was Betty Jean on her own, went to these people and met with them, so just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to each of them, thank you to Betty Jean and JJ for their work as well. I'd make the motion to pass and accept. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to our regular agenda, I am going to pull up item 3A13. I was asked if we would address that one first because of some time constraints on people. Number 13 is discuss and consider to take action on the Nuasis County collecting plat application fees within the county's jurisdiction and related matters.
Judge, I make a motion that, well, we approve this?
We have a motion and a second to approve. Do we have any other discussion?
Yes. We have people here that would like to speak on the matter.
Yes.
Would like to allow them that opportunity to speak. I think they have some potential other offers of suggestions that might be good.
Perfect.
Good morning, my name is Alicia Casperitas, I'm the executive officer of the Coastal Bend Home Builders Association. So on behalf of the Coastal Bend Home Builders Association, we are formally in opposition to any form of plating fees procured by and from Nuasis County within the city of Corpus Christi's CCN and ETJ. As our development community deals directly with the city of Corpus Christi, when submitting plaits and procuring approval and commentary, our membership is not in opposition to the proposed plating fee structure for the county maintained area outside of the ETJ, barring a review and explanation of the services each fee will be allocated to. In my discussion with other builders associations in Texas, the common procedure is the counties with the city that directly oversees the development processes varied. Our interlocal agreement is unique in the way that developers only submit to the city and the city handles the process of sending, of sending to individual departments, including the county. However, the consensus is that fees were only paid to the municipality in which the developer is required to submit the paperwork to directly. In instance of developing, in the instance of development falling inside of an ETJ, the county fees are drastically reduced to be, if being paid to the county and the city, because the developer must submit to both county and city individually. In our area, the developer only submits to the city when the development falls within the ETJ. Our recommendation to the county would be to work with the city on amending the interlocal agreement to procure the portion of fees they are seeking to collect within the ETJ directly from the city.
Moses Mastagassi with Coastal Bend Lots. I am a land developer in the city of Corpus Christi in Nuasis County. So just to kinda add on to what our EO was talking about, ultimately, the county has an interlocal agreement that they had from 2003. It's got a lot of failing parts on both sides. I would recommend and been recommending for a few years now that the county open discussions with the city, because ultimately, the city is the one who takes the plat if you're inside, in the county ETJ. And that's kind of the, the main argument here, is if the city is taking over, has the plat, your interlocal agreement is requesting that you, the county being the review process, when the city ultimately has a review process themselves. The city, in their review process, whether it's through their public works, whether through, it's their water department, or other departments that they have at the city, they share these fees for their review process. And y'all can be a part of that rather than create your own fee for plaits that are in the ETJ. Now, when you have neighborhoods that are outside the city ETJ, we fully support y'all being able to collect a fee, but we also want a service for that fee. And right now, the county needs to provide better service, better communication. So if I come bring a plat that's in the county but not in the ETJ, that I know who to talk to, how long it'll take to get comments back, rules and guidelines and procedures that only benefit your staff and benefit the developer to come out with a better project, whether that's for the streets, the drainage, and the portions that we can do in the county. But right now, you're asking to do it as a whole, and then ultimately, you're double taxing your citizens, 'cause ultimately, the cost goes down to them, right? And if you look at the interlocal agreement, there's a lot of things that you can come and fix, and I recommend you engage with development services, because this is standard process and procedure. At the end of the day, they share funds and fees for their plat review and their PI review. And right now, I've done a neighborhood that's in the county but in the ETJ, and it took somewhere of nine months to get back comments and plat comments from the county, because you have a 30-day guideline. When the, the city sends you the information, I can't talk to you, I have to talk to the city, the city has to talk to you, and then you have up to 30 days to respond, then send it back to them, and then another 30 days for any particular comment, and generally, you take all 30 days. And that doesn't do anything but slow down development, slow down taxes for the city, for the county, and then slow down development as a whole. So I think there's a lot of things that the county can do, but I recommend you start with looking at that interlocal agreement and fixing that and, and, you know, updating it mainly besides fixing it. It's from 2003 and the world has changed, right? But ultimately, we cannot bring our plaits and our PI plans to the county, so how would we pay you a fee? Because the city is the, the development services does the intake. And they can easily portion out a portion of their fees to pay for the portion of review or process that you require in that, because at the end of the day, they do that for other departments that they have and that they work with in their own city. And that's basically my part, so...
Makes sense, good point.
Judge, Commissioners, Bart Brazelton, Brazelton Development, thank you for having us here today. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, and we appreciate the opportunity to visit with you on this issue. One of the key things our association is always against is double fees. And that's essentially where this goes. I wanted to address the issue of the CCN, which is the Corpus Christi's water area. And as long as we fall within that, there's additional problems that are created if this interlocal agreement is not updated and followed. It seems pretty clear that the agreement is in place, we've been using it for years, and inside the ETJ and inside the CCN, this will create challenges and double fees. So we appreciate your consideration of our request, thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, some discussion on the motion?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I've always said that I support the idea of these fees to collect what the county should. I've always been on record that I do not believe in placing a, a, an additional fee on our developers when it's already being taken. I think that's the issue that we gotta work through, and I, and I totally agree with that. But Commissioner Hernandez, I know that this has been an issue you've been passionate about, put a lot of time into. I think if, if you change the motion, or if you retracted your motion and allowed it just to adopt the plating fees proposed outside the ETJ of Corpus Christi, I think, I know I for one would be, you know, accepting of that. And then, I can make another motion that we can then direct staff or the judge or someone else to go and work with the city of Corpus Christi on this. 'Cause that, that issue, as Moses said, and Bart said, and Alicia said, it's, it's not going away, it's been there. There has been no real communication in almost 20, 21 years since the creation of this interlocal to be, to, to adjust for the boundaries that have changed, the CCN, definitely, when you're talking about the boundaries of, of the water system for the city of Corpus Christi. So if we change, Commissioner, because if you keep this motion, I, I will support it for the entire county. But we support everything outside the ETJ of Corpus Christi, and then we come back and then we work on the rest of it to correct it. 'Cause that's the, I think that's the only issue y'all have, is just work out that part along the ETJ, correct? Okay.
And that would be working out the MOU with Corpus Christi to where we get our fees for what we do and clarifying the time where we respond, so that you're not waiting. That was a big issue that was brought to my attention in that, so I, I can agree to that.
I thought that what the motion says, county's jurisdiction and related matters, you know, we're talking about the county, we're not talking about the city here. I don't think we're saying about the city. Says the county's jurisdiction, to me, is from the ETJ forward, from the western area.
If you can correct, if you can clarify, that's what we're, yes.
Juan, didn't we talk about this yesterday, Juan? Could you come up?
And we agreed that anything outside...
And the microphone, and the microphone, sorry, yes.
This is within the jurisdiction.
It'll be within, I think we...
Outside of the...
Outside, outside of the, outside of the ETJ.
The other would be working on an MOU with the city that we would need clarification on.
That's correct, Judge.
Okay. So it just needs to clarify that it's outside the ETJ, 'cause the county's jurisdiction is inside and outside the ETJ. So it just needs to be clarified. Sounds like that's where you're going anywhere.
Reword your motion.
We discussed it yesterday and that's what we decided, anything outside the ETJ.
Make sure your motion says that, anything outside, and I think we're ready to move forward and vote, yes. Feel, clarify your motion, yes.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that my motion include outside of the ETJ.
To only, only be, this motion only affects outside of the ETJ, yes.
The same thing. So, you know, I second it, I'm gonna second it, but you know, I think there's, I'm glad we come and this is brought up, because there's, there's faults in everybody here. The county, the developers, everybody has a little fault in this, in this process. You know, when we have out there and we have problems, sometimes we need to, we need to be more strict. But we have an issues out there too. You know, they're not the county issue, but they're developers' issues that we need to correct also. So like, we want us to correct some things, I think the developer needs to get together and correct some of the issues we have in out there when we're developing, to make sure everything's clarified, make sure everything's permitted, make sure everything's going, water's going the right direction and everything else. Those are the things we, and I think it's time for us to get more involved too, to find, to, just to make sure everything's going the right direction. You know, so there's, I guess it's checking balance for both of us. So, you know, so I, so I think that it's about time, so, you know, my, my second emotion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
The motion is clear then.
Yes.
It's outside the...
Outside the ETJ.
I'm good with that.
Yes. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the same sign.
And Judge, I wanna make...
The motion passes.
Another motion, just that we direct staff and the county judge or designee to meet with the city of Corpus Christi to begin work on the interlocal agreement between the city and Nuasis County to address the county collecting portion, which Commissioner mentioned earlier, and the plating fees and any other issues that need to be addressed to update the interlocal. And that would be my motion.
Unless you do, are you doing that already, Juan? It's a question I have then.
No.
Please directing him to do it now.
I know, I know exactly what he said, but, I mean, are we doing now with the city? Or we getting, the city brings you the plaits to review?
The, the process, Commissioners, anything within the ETJ, the cities, the city submits us the plaits for us to review. They review them themselves, but also our staff reviews the plat. So then, once we get, usually anywhere from, like Moses says, anywhere from 14 to 30 days turnaround. As I mentioned before, we try to expedite the process, 'cause I know it's, it's, you know, we try to assist. But it, it, we do review it and then we submit it back to the city, and then the city submits back comments to, to the, to the developer.
So is that like an MOU we have with the city, or do we need a new one, or what?
Yes, sir, and I do, I do agree, we do need to update the, the interlocal agreement. I think there needs to be some type of documentation that says that the, the city can't accept the subdivision without two signatures, either the one from the county and one from the city, with some type of, of letterhead that says that we both agree that, that the development is and was constructed by the, by the way that the engineer designed it.
Well, I agree with that one, okay.
Yeah, and there's, and, and you're, you're right, Commissioner, there's a lot of problems that this MOU needs to be update, or sorry, this interlocal needs to be updated, because, you know, what happens a lot of times is, like, there was a, there's a subdivision right now that we wouldn't approve and didn't approve, and then the city annexed it and they approved it, and it's causing us all kinds of problems in the county, because this interlocal is not in good shape. So I really appreciate the suggestion made by the, the, the builders on that, because that interlocal hadn't been looked at in 21 years, that's, that's absurd. I mean, the world has changed, so I, I totally support that motion, Commissioner Mahrez, I appreciate you taking the lead on that motion, and...
Are you seconding it?
He did.
Oh, you seconded it, oh, he's sorry.
And thanks to Commissioner Hernandez for putting it on the agenda with the, the fees. I mean, this is a good positive discussion, I think we can make a lot of, you know, progress if we can get this, now we gotta get the city to agree to sit down with us, right? And, and talk about it, and hopefully, they'll, they'll comply, but...
You, Juan and Jenny and I need to have a meeting... You, Juan and Jenny and I need to have a meeting before I go talk to the city and talk to the, so let's have a meeting and.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. We'll set something up.
Judge, the reason I, the reason I brought this up was because homeowners were calling us or calling me that they wanted the streets or the roads fixed, you know? And the city had already approved, that's why they build it. But they really weren't, the roads weren't constructed to counties.
Standards, yes.
Standards. And then we had to go back in and redo it. So it was costing the county money that we really can't afford to do. We need to get our sum of money back.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And thank you all for being here this morning, yes. Moving back in our regular agenda. Item one, discuss and consider adopting a resolution approving the issuance of tax exempt financing to the South Texas Lighthouse for the Blind. They are refinancing, have to approve and sign a certificate to keep their previously already approved tax exemption status. I would make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Just to point out, there's no liability, I'm on there for the county and I, it's, it's an odd deal that we have to approve this, but.
Yes.
So we, so.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number two, discuss and consider executing an agreement with the city of Port Aransas for lifeguard services along the beach at IB McGee Park.
So moved, Judge, this is a.
Regular thing we do every year.
The funding's in the budget for coastal parks.
I'll second that motion.
And a reminder, we, we do that with the city of Corpus Christi?
We do.
Yes.
This is just a, it was a little late getting it from Port A, we're not sure why, but it's.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Item number three, discuss and consider updating the current fees charged to applicants for the Dune Protection Permit Fees and Related Matters.
Scott's here somewhere.
I thought they were here just.
Same thing or a different thing?
No, it's a different, it's an individual one. It's an approval.
Four is a single family residence, four is a specific residence.
There they are, hello?
Sorry about that.
Yes, we're on updating the current fees to applicants for the Dune Protection Permit Fees.
Yes, ma'am, Judge, Commissioners Court. So the last time these fees have been evaluated and looked at was fourteen years ago. And so what we're trying to do is come to you and ask you if you'll look at the proposed fee structure versus what the fee structure was before. We have two new fee structures we want to be considered. And that is a no, no Dune Permit. It takes about as much time as a regular permit. There's never been a fee structure for that. And violations. Right now, we're dealing with three Dune violations where people started work without any kind of permit at all. And those take an incredible amount of work. And there's no fee structure to capture that kind of work. So it's just fees that we need to recover the cost of processing these permits, nothing more. We're not trying to make any profit off of them. But if y'all need time to digest this, we could table it and bring it back. But it's pretty straightforward.
I'm, I'm good if everybody else is, but that's, if anybody needs time, that's okay. So whatever, I'd make a motion to pass unless anybody needs some time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass. Is there any other discussion?
I have, we have looked at other jurisdictional fee structures so we can make sure and compare it to BCC fees at the city, Beachfront Construction Certification.
Thank you.
At the city. So we're making sure we're remaining comparable along the Texas coast. There are some that are much more higher than what ours are. But, you know, I mean, they're not all gonna be apples to apples, but we have looked at all that.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, sorry. Any opposed, same sign. Did you say aye, Commissioner Hernandez? I'm sorry, we thought, I couldn't tell if that was, if I jumped on the gun. Item number four, discuss and consider approval of no, of a no Dune Protection Permit required for proposal for a single family at a one thirty-eight C air lane.
Yeah, this is a no Dune Permit required. There's no dunes there, it's a perfectly flat lot. There's a single residential development.
And the, and the microphone a little bit better, they can hear you. So there's not one required. It is not, you're denying this or something. I read through it, it says no, I was like, oh, okay.
That's just the way that it's.
It's not required, so I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those, oh, clarification.
Have we ever had a, a no Dune before, come before?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Because the, so a no Dune Permit required means they're not impacting dunes and they're not C word of the three fifty, so they don't, also don't require an exemption request. So if they're not impacting dunes, then we, in the, the Beach Manager of Plain County says it's a no Dune Permit.
Don't need it.
Maybe I only pay attention, remember the ones that we do require? So maybe that's why I'm a little confused. Because it's like, whoa, I don't remember seeing this before, so.
Yeah, the no Dune Permit, yeah. No Dune Permits don't have to go before BMAC, but they still require Commissioner approval.
Okay, thank you.
Good point. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you. Um, oh, do you have another one on the agenda, Scott?
The lifeguard one?
We already did it, you're out of here, sorry.
Okay. Only other thing I got is in purchasing with the conditional selection of an engineering firm.
You're good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, moving on to item five, discuss and consider the approval of an agreement between Oasis County and Ambry Genetics to conduct forensic sci, scientific testing in certain cases, and this is only when it's necessary, when y'all want to use this.
So moved, Judge?
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you for being here for us.
Thank you.
Item number six, approve amendment to supplemental pay allocation to Department thirteen twenty-five as designated by the county attorney in accordance with section forty-six dot zero zero three one of the Texas Government Code. And there is no fiscal impact to the county.
So moved, Judge?
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number seven, discuss and consider authorizing and approving the execution of an interlocal agreement between Oasis County and the city of Robstown for improvements to the city of Robstown building at four zero one West Ligastrom Boulevard. And this is funded by Precinct Three American Rescue Plan Act funds. And the county attorney has reviewed and approved this agreement. You wanna, it's yours to motion to pass?
Motion to accept.
I'll second that motion. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those in favor say aye, everybody? Thank you. The motion passes, thank you. Item number eight, discuss and consider award and execution of ARPA-funded contractor agreement with ICE construction for the Amistad Veterans Memorial Park improvements in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and paid for out of Precinct Two Commissioner funds, ARPA funds.
So moved, Judge?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the same sign. The motion passes. Item number nine, discuss and consider approving the ARPA beneficiary agreements for the following agencies. Fifteen thousand for Mission of Mercy, seventeen thousand for American Legion Post three sixty-four, sixty-four hundred to Gulf Coast Humane Society, eighty-one hundred to, for PAC. And I believe the county attorney has seen these. There may be a, one final one getting finished, but we, the PAC one is, we're waiting on, but we can make the motion to approve.
I was gonna say, I can like to make the motion, we're on here next week.
Well, we can go ahead and make the motion to approve as soon as she gets it to allow me to sign it. Yes, yes. It's all the same as the others. It's his precinct money and it's.
Okay.
Second.
Public health awards.
Yes, it's for the health clinic, yes. We have a motion and a second. Any other? It's his item and Commissioner Hernandez seconded, sorry. Motion, oh, oh, okay. All those in favor say aye. Thank you, aye. Any opposed, the same sign, the motion passes. Do you want to announce when it is or something?
I think we, we've done this already once before.
Thank you.
So y'all can pass them out, whatever you want.
Yes.
A lot of, a lot of free stuff coming up. It's gonna be at West Oso and the Robstown Calderon at the, at the Health and Wellness Clinic there. So we didn't have IRT, then we had the military, but all our partners, which, you know, all of the partners, you list them on the one side, decided that we can do it, we can do it. So we all got together and we've been having meetings. Last year, we had the last meeting, we had about maybe fifty people there. And so we're all ready to go with all the services and especially the free, no, no dental this time around because we didn't have enough for dental. But we do have the eyes, glasses at Mission of Mercy, where they do the exams and free eyeglasses. And then everything else will be on medicals on West Oso and Calderon. And also for the animals, we're doing the vaccinations, the, the, the tags and hopefully the chips for the animals as well as the rabies shots. So everything's free, you know, so, you know, just come in, walk in and get it done. No, we're doing humans, we're doing animals.
Thank you. Great, great program. Unfortunately, it's only a week this year, but it's still a great deal, yes. For our community, yes. Item number ten, discuss and consider distributing the remaining countywide available balance of three million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and the remaining court individual balances that total four hundred and sixteen thousand of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. We have a list, I think in your backup. Teresa did a great job of pointing out the available funds and coming to that. And Teresa and Grant Works and Grants or whoever helped on this project, thank you very much. But we are getting down to the wire. It is coming to the end. We want to make sure that we utilize these funds.
Judge, could I jump in real quick before we start this discussion? I wanted to make a motion to allocate my remaining Precinct Four funds to three projects as contingency funds. London Drainage, Parker Pool and Bob Hall Pier. I feel certain one or all of those are, might not have enough. So I'd like to just go ahead and allocate that two-ten to be used for any of those three projects as contingency.
Michael or Anna, do y'all want to talk, I mean, without, I think, I think we had a plan that, you know, by November, this is great, leaving in contingency. But by November the thirteenth, our next meeting, these are gonna have to be set, dedicated. I don't know if we can leave it open-ended like that.
It's not open-ended, I'm dedicating it to those three.
Divide it equally then, what?
No, just however they're needed. They're divided, they'll be used.
I think it has to be Amanda and Jessica on the line.
Wait, I can only hear one person, there's four talking.
Amanda is on the line from Grant Works and Jessica. And it does have to be completely contracted.
Right. So I'm allocating it to these three projects that are going to go out for bids, that are going to be under contract. And it is allocated towards those three projects. I don't know how much is gonna be needed for each project, but it will be, it will be used. Because I know one's already over budget. I know the other two probably, we have no contingency in Bob Hall. So that is allocating towards three specific projects. That's what I was, I was understanding that as long as you allocated towards specific projects, that, that took care of the requirement. And that's what I'm doing is I'm allocating it towards those three projects.
Okay, yes.
Microphone up.
I believe that we're in the budgeting type of process here. So you're allocating funds towards a specific project, yes. The commitment that Grant Works and, and the Grants Department frankly will be worried about is just that we do contract with somebody before the end of the year. And that's the commitment of funds and.
They've already been contracted. They will, Parker Pool's already been bid, London Drainage is gonna be done, Bob Hall's already been signed. So they've already been.
Okay, so these are just for existing projects that we've already?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Really have a contract on those?
Bob Hall's been signed.
Yes, they have.
Parker Pool will come up at the next meeting.
As an example, right now, we are, we are negotiating.
And the microphone, sorry.
As an example, right now, we're negotiating for the Parker Pool project. So we've come down on the amount, but we're trying to reduce it a little bit more. That's why Commissioner is unsure as to what the amount, the final amount will be. Because we want to, we'll have a completed project, but this extra funding kinda helps push it further, so.
And then the London Drainage has already been, the engineers are working on that. And they have, I don't know what Juan is, they have sixty or ninety days, whatever, from the time in which we actually made the award to bring back the engineering designs. And then that will go out for bids. So these are all existing projects already allocated, one of which the contract is signed, one of which will be coming up soon, and the other one will be done well before the end of the year.
So do you need to allocate this that way then yet? Or wait till the bids come in and just when you award the bids, put it on to however it goes?
Well, but I was supposed to have allocated this by the end of May, which was what we passed to court. And I'm already behind on that. And so this puts, this gets mine allocated so I can quit looking at the fact that I haven't done what I was supposed to do in the end of May. Because I thought I would have these overages by then and I don't, I still don't. It may be August, September, it'll be before the end of the year. But I want to get it allocated so that we know that we've got those monies available. So that I can, so that if, when we come back with Edward and I, I've already allocated it, I don't need to do it again. So, I mean, I'm allocating this towards three specific projects that will be under contract before the end of the year.
And it's first come, first served, whoever gets up there and needs it first, yeah.
Of those three projects, right.
Exactly, okay, okay.
So would this be, and then, I, I don't want to overstep or anything. Would this be like an intent to allocate once those figures are known?
No, it's, I'm allocating this money to those projects.
So you already have the money to, to allocate?
Yeah. I've got two hundred and ten thousand left in my Precinct Four funds that was supposed to be allocated by the end of May. I didn't have numbers with which to do it. I still don't have numbers from which to do it. But I need to do this because I was supposed to have done it already. So I'm just allocating it towards three specific projects that I know will be allocated or I know that will be all signed up before the end of the year.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Okay. Very good.
Then you can take that off the list, Teresa, so I'm not showing up anymore. That's what I'm doing this for.
So is that a motion then? That's a motion, I'll.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
And that was for the London Drainage, Parker Pool, Bob Hall Pier. So Lorenzo's got that.
As long as y'all say we can do it that way, I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Oh.
I don't know, I'm not sure, but I'm just, what, what, what do you have enough? Or two of them, you don't have enough in one?
I'll have to, I'll have to manage that. I mean, that's, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what I, I don't know until I know.
That's kind of our plan and what I was getting to with this. I was hoping we'd do this first part first and then do our personals. But.
Oh, sorry.
At, at the end, at our November meeting, any projects with, that aren't funded, aren't contracted, aren't coming forward, no likelihood, we're going to have to make some decisions moving forward on that unallocated money, anything that is left over in these balances. So we wanted to have these done by May, we said, and now we're already in July. And we need to be moving these projects forward or we're gonna wind up, we don't want to lose that. My question to many of them and, and why we did the previous, the first part of the page in allocating them to Nuasis County Obligations, Nuasis County things that this will help us in the budget the next year, things that we're taking care of are easy. We're not dealing with outside people attorneys. We're not dealing with outside entities. These are basically Nuasis County properties, Nuasis County responsibilities. That therefore, then moving forward into this, was the reason for the list of projects. And, and we took, we sent emails to everyone to turn in a project. If you had some projects that you wanted to do, the focus was on Nuasis County properties. This is the list that we got. And the, if you go down the list from the walking trail to, I mean, the, we're on the wrong page, sorry. The other page has it. If you go down the list, the medical examiner, the jail roof, the commissioner's courtroom, audio video, update our courtroom, finally, the courthouse security equipment for downstairs, the emergency operations center upgrade, coastal parks, capital equipment. We understood and found out during this that they needed some equipment that they didn't have available. It was a great usage. Calderon building roof, Sunrise Pond, gazebo and playground, Amistad Park, Berlinga Senior Community Center roof, Bishop Community Center roof replacement, Bishop Community Center ADA ramps, Hilltop Community Center roof upgrade, interior ceiling, Hazel Bazemar Park workout area equipment, Driscoll Community Center exterior siding improvements, Driscoll Community Center playground equipment. These all projects that were turned in by each of you and us listing as, especially the equipment, the things that we need here locally totaled to the three million six hundred and fifty-nine. So we were wanting to get a motion to approve these things with our ARPA money and then come back in November. And anything that hasn't moved forward, doesn't have a contract, isn't working towards, we feel like we'll have a signed contract before December. Then we will have to repurchase quick items, purchase equipment, something for the courthouse, something that we can do before we let this money just go, because it has to be done by December twenty-sixth.
Judge, this is a great, this was a great way of doing this. I really appreciate you taking the lead on this. My, my, you know, this three oh two remaining, maybe we allocate that as contingency for all these projects and be done, because I'm afraid like on every, everything else.
We, that's what we planned on leaving it until the November meeting anyway to see what is necessary. And then any other projects that fall during that time.
If you wanna make the motion since you.
I would make the motion to pass with all of these. We sent it to Grant Works as well for them to look over, yes.
Did we get a full vote because we paused on the vote for Jag?
On what?
For Brett's.
No, we voted.
We voted. Everybody voted, yeah. It was unanimous on.
I think I asked the question right.
You asked after we voted, I think he asked. Yes, uh-huh. I, I'm pretty sure we did.
My question, Judge, also, if we have monies in rehearing in some areas, it might, might help the county. Instead of such a certain position, we keep certain positions with some of the ARPA funds for two years?
I couldn't hear you.
He wants to use it for payroll instead of eliminating.
Keep in certain positions with the ARPA funds.
We can, we can look at that in November.
In November with this remaining money that we have.
I think we're gonna end up using it all.
I just wanna say, if I have some this foot, I wanna do.
Yeah. And truthfully, with this three hundred, with everything coming over, I'd be surprised if we have leftover. But yes, that is something that we can discuss in there.
Have anything left over.
But I will. I'm, I'm using my own fund for some projects.
Well, no, but I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we look at, like, what she's saying is wait until November and see where we are.
Yes. Right now, your funds are fifty-five thousand and that won't fund many positions, yeah.
My ARPA funds will. The other ones that I got, right?
Yeah. And so.
Spent all your ARPA funds. I thought yours was all gone.
No, but I got some money back.
Fifty-five thousand is what is on this list.
Yeah, but I got some money back from, remember we met, we said.
We didn't take that back. We didn't, that was when, we left it in here instead of transferring. That's why we did this list of priorities. That's why we did the list of what we wanted to do. When, what he is talking about to clarify is when we were worried about the jail roof, Commissioner Gonzalez, myself and Commissioner Modas transferred some of our COs to make up the difference, to get all of the roof into one funding source, this, with that, with this. And we traded Edward back there, the COs, for him to use on his parks. The amount, I don't have them in front of me, but there was like eight hundred and something thousand of my funds that were used, three hundred thousand of Commissioner Gonzalez's funds were used, and like a hundred and fifty, almost two hundred of Commissioner Modas's funds used. That being said, that's why in this list of things, when I took it into consideration, our projects, I asked these guys first because instead of moving money back and giving him three hundred and giving me my eight hundred thousand and giving that, these are all countywide projects. These are countywide benefits. So we did absolutely everything for the medical examiner's office that they asked for, which is in his. We did your, all the roofs and all the, the parks, the things you asked for were, were a priority on this list. We listed them in order, but they were a priority.
But that's, that's in that list you have already, right?
It's on the big list. So instead of getting your money back, you've got this three hundred and forty thousand on this, yes.
But if I use my own money, I can have that money for something else.
There is no.
No, the one, the one that I was gonna use for the roof. I, I, I know it's in there. I know where it's at. But I'm just saying, if, if I use my, some of my funds that I have for my CO funds to handle some of the roofs and all that, you know, because I wanna use my funds, right? I have the, I, I still have the ARPA funds that, that instead of putting them on the roof that I can.
Edward has already spent that money and he already has projects dedicated. We couldn't take it back. He has already funded Edward.
I believe what Commissioner's asking is he's got his own revenue funds that he's received through the county court. So he's using that, that funding to pay for some of these other items. So if the funding for the ARPA doesn't come through, for example, we're trying to do a job order contract and we just found out that we can't really do that, he's gonna use his, his, his funds that are, he received that are not ARPA funds to do those projects and then shift these ARPA funds that you just allocated to him to another project.
Now. If you do all of this, the problem with this is like we said, moving forward this late in the game, these projects you have listed here have to go out for bid. They have to be sent for, I mean, what is the timeframe, Michael? We talked about, we're looking at a month at the earliest if these were ready to go with work orders tomorrow.
Right, yeah. I was, I've been telling the court for some months now that August was fast approaching and I really need specs and plans for these items and permission to bid by around mid-August so that I have the sixty to ninety day window to complete those and get them contracted by November twenty meeting. And then I have a cushion of the December eleven meeting. And so if y'all are trying to start new projects now, that's fine, as long as we can get the drawings for those into my office by August.
But I think you were asking more about employees.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's under contract. I don't think we can do this for, that's what, I don't think we can, that's not under contract. In other words, everything has to be under contract by the end of twenty-four. We don't have a contract with employees. So I don't know how that would qualify, is what I think, that's what you were asking, right?
For salaries.
See, I don't think we can do any more salaries.
Keeping positions.
Just to clarify on the, so these projects are existing projects, right? And we're gonna use, it's almost like a million dollars that we reallocated from ARPA using the COs that we took from the coast, the Parks Department. They're really getting it back in additional projects, but they still have the CO funds that we, that we allocated to them for the same projects. This is, this is new. And so there's not any additional funds that you have remaining in your own specific precinct, Commissioner, because yours was, everybody had four mil and the balances that you have remaining are the balances that we show on here, which yours is the fifty-five K and then we did the, the Grant Works amendment, so you're gonna reduce it by twenty-seven five. So it's, it's decreasing, but.
I understand all that, but when the money I gave the money, it was CO money, right?
Right.
It wasn't ARPA funds.
That's correct.
So I, I expected to get my money back. I don't care, I don't care about the ARPA funds. I just want my, if I, if we didn't use it, I want that money back so I can use it. Because it was mine to begin with, but we were kind enough to give it, to use it, somebody else that we didn't use it.
Well, in order to not do that, because Edward has contracts and we have purchase orders using the COs and the.
He's not gonna use that money.
Was under.
He's already, he's already allocated it to those parks. That's the reason we had to do it this way. I mean.
Not my, not my part?
The whole point, we gave him the two. He had already spent hours first. He did that. Remember when we came to court and I asked him to stop and spend the other first and not worry? That was what I was talking about, but it was already spent. So I did eight hundred thousand and I don't get mine back either. It's like that, it's just done, but it's on county projects at least. It's on county. And, and then this other here that you have in Precinct Two, the three hundred and forty, it's still, you're getting additional money on top of your four million that you had. This is the available funds.
No, I'm not getting more money. I'm getting whatever I use for my COs.
Well, the funds that were, the funds that were.
You're getting additional projects in your area.
I'm using my money, Judge.
Yes, and I am too, yes.
That's my money for my prop, for my budget, you know? And we did it again, you know, to operate, to cooperate with this here. But when this thing started moving around, there's too many moving around now. So it should've just come back where it went from, where it came from, right? So, and then when I talked to you on the other, I thought that was a deal, that it was gonna come back to, to me, I was gonna use it. I didn't, I never, and when I met with Teresa, we didn't see it as part of the major spending. We thought, we thought it was gonna be separate. Remember you said, everything's here, it's gonna come to the bottom. So you still be able to take yours from the three, four, and something that was left over. So because those, those weren't, those weren't on the main spendings to begin with.
But even if you take these projects off, your Commissioner Precinct Two is three hundred and forty thousand. If you wanna cancel those projects off and take the three hundred and forty thousand in ARPA money, I am not sure that with the employees, that can we get that done if he wants to use it on something different?
I wanted to clarify on that.
Hold on, hold on. But what was Teresa's, you needed to answer what he was asking you, because I'm confused on this. Cause I think, I thought we, I thought this money was spent. So maybe, I mean, I thought on Edward's project, I may be wrong.
The Parks Department had six million dollars to spend for the parks. What we did was we removed two million dollars and substituted CO funds to keep the jail project within the ARPA allocation. So the jail project came in underfunded. It came in at four point two, four point six, so that balance.
Two million something.
Mm-hmm. So there's two point three million that was remaining from that project. It's a part of this total allocation, available countywide funds. And Commissioner, what you're saying is yourself, the judge and Commissioner Modas used CO funds to make up that difference. So if you're saying that you want your ARPA funds back, that was the original thought to do it. But because you have all these funds available, you're just replacing the funds for the parks out of your ARPA, ARPA monies. But this, these are additional. They're not.
But my CO funds are more flexible than my ARPA funds.
That's correct, but they're allocated to whatever projects Edward has going on. So if you're.
Well, it's not his project. They're, they're my projects.
No, they were projects that were allocated to the parks for, they were, they were still ARPA projects, but we're using CO funds because we switched, we moved the funds around.
Well, anything that was taken, to me, if you take it away and you're not gonna use it, bring it back. That's what, that was my thing.
So in that case, what you're saying if.
Put it back in the pot for everybody to use, but nobody else has put anything into it except us, you know? I mean, so.
Edward spent it.
But, but it was my CO funds and that wasn't ARPA fund. No, it didn't.
Ask Edward. He's saying yes, Commissioner.
Edward, answer.
So we took the two million dollars and we purchased lighting for Banquete and purchased lighting for.
And the microphone, please.
Excuse me, sorry about that, Judge.
Pull it up.
So the two current projects are the big projects that we have, the two big lighting projects that were approved by the court that are, where we're pushing lights into, they actually delivered the lights. We should have the light stands up by, by the end of August in Banquete and the light stands in, in, Lyondell Basell should be up by the end of, should be, start going up by the end of September. So those projects are the ones that we, we were funding with that two million dollars. So part of that two million dollars, Commissioner, if you remember, it was actually, I lost seven hundred thousand of that, plus another two hundred thousand of those CO monies that I originally had. So I'm actually short about a.
So when the judge told me there was two million, there was no two million then? And so, because you already spent it?
No, I've just recently spent it, because I'm working all the projects at the same time. Judge was.
But if you knew we were working this deal, you should've held off on it.
This was done before the deal, Commissioner.
Right, because this is what the judge tried to stop and.
That's what I tried to stop and you let him go forward last time when I told him not to spend it.
That was a meeting, that was a meeting.
It was a.
Why would I spend?
A couple of meetings ago when I said to stop and y'all said, no, we gave it to him.
It's gotten real confusing. To me, you know, I was kind enough to say, you can have some of my money for my COs, for one thing, right? You didn't use it for one thing, that money should come back to me. That's the bottom line. You know, if it was ARPA funds, I don't care. You can have the ARPA funds. But that CO money belongs to me. And I use it, and I wanna use it for one purpose and I didn't use it, so it belongs back. Somebody should've come to me right after that and said, you know what? We've got this money left over. We didn't use it. So nobody did. So I just, I don't, I need those funds back because I wanna use them.
The thing that we focused on with this list is your priority.
It's, Commissioner, hold on. We had this up, we brought this up a meeting or two ago. The judge tried to stop this. You said no, let Edward, go back and look at the tape.
You did, Commissioner.
You absolutely did. Edward brought it in here. He explained everything. He said.
What he was saying was part of the two million though.
But he said, he did. Go back and watch the video. He explained everything. The judge tried to stop it.
Cause the whole issue with theirs.
Hold on. He said we can't stop it. We said, okay, if this is what you wanna do. And you, you led the charge on that meeting, even though the judge tried to stop it. And we all went ahead and went along with it because you wanted to do it. So go back and watch that video. Edward came in and explained exactly where your money was. He told us.
Because the judge already come to me and told me forty thousand dollars coming back to the ARPA fund.
I said, we didn't use that. That's the reason I went to you on this priority list, because you had contributed.
Right.
You got two things on, your main things was the jail roof and your list of three hundred and forty. So you have nine hundred and forty on here that was your priority.
Well, my, I mean, that's a countywide project, Judge.
Yes, but this is all the money we have, so that's why we asked.
I mean, three hundred and forty thousand dollars, I, I could've used it for something else, you know? But I mean, you know, you know, this is really, I mean, I hate this thing about ARPA funds, but, you know, I mean, it just gotten to be a real mess and we're moving too many monies around without clarifying things first. We move them around and then we talk about it. You know, we need to stop moving them around and talk about it first before.
But we have to do a lot of these things in a hurry, yes. Anna wanted to mention something about the pay, payments to employees or something, yes.
Yes, we can get a position and fill it through twenty twenty-six, but it has to be filled by twenty twenty-four.
I know, in December.
December. It, it, you cannot just have the position that, okay, this is how much money it's gonna be. It has to be filled. It has, somebody has to be in that position.
So whatever, whatever is earmarked in my funds right now, according to that list you have there, Judge, that you said I'm gonna spend on, so I'll put a hold on them.
You wanna hold your Commissioner Precinct Two? You don't want that to move forward?
No.
For your ARPA money?
No.
Yes.
Okay, so then the amendment would be everything but what's on Commissioner Two?
Mm-hmm.
So, hang on a minute.
Commissioner Modas, you have any questions?
So would those funds just go back to Commissioner?
Yes.
Gonzalez, ARPA, okay.
Okay, so then who, who made the, you made the motion, Judge? I don't even remember who made it at this point.
I made the motion to pass, yes.
I wanted just to comment. I mean, I agree with what Commissioner Gonzalez is saying on this. It's, I know that we've, we've made every effort we can to help support the county. My, my frustration is the COs are a lot easier. Had we known. I've kind of, I, I kind of had that, that conversation all by myself over the last few days, kinda coming to the terms that it, it did good, right? We needed to do it. But in retrospect, should've never done it because we need flexibility in some of our projects that COs allow. And now we're handcuffed by ARPA and we're handcuffed by a timeframe. And that's just, that just kills me. Because there's other projects I, I would love to be able to fund with that, with that money and knowing that we're, we're handcuffed now. So I'm just frustrated by the process.
Yes.
I've, like I said, I've come to terms with it, let's, you know, I wanna move forward, yeah.
But if you look back in the video, when we transferred that money to the roof project, when we ask, I'm sorry, Edward, I'm gonna throw you under the bus on this one, but we instructed Edward to use the ARPA money first and we were hoping to get that roof project in. We thought it was gonna be more costly, but I said, with the ARPA money and the constraints and the contracts, to schedule all of that first, you're gonna have a lot of projects. I know he oversees a lot of the commissioners' projects as well. I thought the focus was gonna be on that, not the COs, because of the flexibility. There wasn't a time constraint on the COs. Once we learned of this and the bid came in, those projects had already been brought to court. They had already been approved. They had already been designated. So that was the reason, a couple of meetings ago, when I asked to stop that one and y'all, we moved ahead. So there's been a lot of miscommunication, a lot of misunderstanding in this. But these are all good things for the county. These are all countywide benefits. And I think at the end of the day, it's good for the county. At the end of the day, with. At the end of the day, with the time constraints that we have moving forward, you know, we cut our losses, say, we wish we'd have known better, we wish maybe the communication would have been better, maybe we had more people involved, but what's done is done and can't be undone, it looks like, so. If you want to omit yours, and I will amend my motion to pass all of the listed additional county projects, excluding the items, the three hundred and forty thousand on Commissioner Precinct two.
Or Judge, do you wanna do it opposite, where we just, um, make a motion to, to, um, remove the three forty and reallocate that to Commissioner Precinct two first, or?
That'd be fine, however, it's easiest, I wanna make it clear, I'm, I'm not.
So, he gets his back?
Yes, uh-huh.
Like, you'd have to rescind your motion?
I'll rescind my motion, you wanna make the motion to do that, that's fine.
Judge, I would make a motion that, uh, the three hundred and forty thousand dollars currently allocated in the list of Precinct two be removed from the list and allocated back to Commissioner Precinct two, as his.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, the motion passes. Now, I'll make my motion to pass, um, the rest of the list, with the countywide, County Judge, Commissioner Precinct four, Commissioner Precinct three, and Commissioner Precinct one, um, projects listed on the page.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? The motion passes. And then I would like to, um, on my.
Did we vote on that, Judge?
Oh, I thought, all in favor, say aye, sorry, I just, like, the motion passes, sorry, I thought we did.
Did we not?
Thank you very much for clarifying, Commissioner Hernandez. Um, on my, um, County Judge funds, I have a hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-five. I would like to, um, allocate sixty thousand to the EOC for material labor and things for the TV and the audiovisual systems that are out currently, for them to, um, purchase and repair.
So moved, or, second, sorry.
Any, any discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and then if we're going ahead and allocating, I would allocate the remainder of those funds to go to the five hundred thousand that I have allocated to the EOC for design, architect, or whatever, any additional funds that they may need, or whatever, like Brent did on the others, yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Say aye, aye, any opposed, same sign, the motion passes, thank you very much. Is there anything we missed on that? I think we're good. Um, moving on to number eleven, discuss and consider execution of amendment number one to grant works contract as procured under RFP. This is precinct two funds for the, um, Petronilla Estates and Belk Lane Drainage Projects, um.
So moved, Judge.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, the motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss and consider, oh, um, this, item number twelve, I'm, we had brought this to court before, and we said we were bringing it back to the first August budget meeting. I am reminded that we tabled this to come back, it should not have been on the agenda, so this is, should be on the August seventh meeting, not today's meeting. During budget hearings, we don't have a clue what our tax levy is or anything, so. And we already voted on that, so do we, August seventh, the first August meeting, yes.
It's already been voted on before.
So, we'll table, just, it shouldn't be on here, we'll skip. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider updating the investment committee policy to remove, um, the former employee, Ide Hernandez, and replace with Commissioners' Court Representative, Teresa McLemore, as a voting member of the committee. And, um, one of the other things that would like to be with this is consider having, uh, the County Judge and Commissioners' Court staff alternate, alternate. We haven't had meetings, and it was our understanding, we don't have anyone taking the minutes or anything. We thought it would be prudent for the Commissioners' Court staff and the County Judges' Office staff to alternate taking meetings for this meeting, if you're all in agreement.
And can we just make it?
If you got nine members, can't somebody take minutes?
Well, I was just gonna say, can we just make it a designated person, a designated position, so that it, we don't name a person all the time?
On the Commissioners' Court Representative, absolutely, yes, yes, yes. So, I would make the motion to approve the Commissioners' Court Representative as a voting member of the, um, Investment Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
That's from Teresa, right?
Yes, Teresa is who we're suggesting right now as a representative for all the Commissioners. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, and, um, we will just pull from the members, whoever we can, to take the minutes. Um, item number fifteen, discuss, discuss and consider updating and adopting the Commissioners' Court policies and all related matters. I had two just points of clarification before we do that, on, um, page eleven, and the Commissioners' Court policy in there. This has, I think it was a typo, it says, the board appointees, there shall be no board or commission appointment made by the Noises County Commissioners' Court sixty days prior to an election, but then the last sentence, it says that they come up in September. Well, I think that should have been August instead of September, so I'd just like a, to, a correction made to the policy. Sixty days prior from election is August, not September, or, so, do we need, I'll make the motion to do that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for clarification on date, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, the motion passes. And then on page ten, did it get corrected? I think I was told it maybe got corrected, the wording. Um, ten C, if a proposed project is a precinct project and another Commissioner is assigned to oversee the project, the ex, no. It should be if the proposed project is, it looks like the wording already got changed. County before, and we changed it, the wording already got corrected, yes.
So, that's how you want it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, it was already corrected, I'm sorry, my first draft, it didn't have the corrected.
What page is that?
Page ten, C, section C, and you may have the corrected wording already. It's, it says, if the proposed project is a precinct project and another Commissioner is assigned to oversee the project by the Commissioners' Court, the expenses should be covered by the county funds, or, and the reason I left that in there, because it says, or another funding source, because we don't decide that anything's coming out of the general fund without it being approved by all of us, so, yeah. Uh, so those were my two corrections or clarifications, does anyone have any others?
Is that a motion, Judge? Or do we need a?
It was already, it was already fixed, so that one, I didn't realize they had corrected that one, yes, and your paper's already fixed.
Okay.
Are there any other corrections or clarifications? Otherwise, I will accept, I'll make the motion to pass the, oh, we already did, we passed the clarification, it's already a Noises County policy, so we don't, why do we need to do anything else?
Um, just as long as the court is, uh, happy with that, then, and you voted on, you voted on the page eleven already?
Already, mm-hmm, so we're good.
We'll, uh, circulate those corrections.
But, okay, I, I remember this way back then, when we discussed all this mess that we got into. And I know, at one time, and then, in fact, the, the judge, he said, we're gonna try it one time, you know, and if it don't work, then we can look at it again, well, it didn't work. It was very good, because I don't, I don't, I don't feel like somebody's telling me how to vote.
Oh, you're talking about the process?
Process, yeah.
Oh, this is, that's a different discussion, that's not.
I thought they were the same thing, it's the same page.
It's a, it's, in the policy, it's another question, it's a question he has, it's not the dates, like mine, his question is on the. What page is it on, Commissioner? You're talking about the, adding the name?
It was page eleven-two, I think it is, part of it.
Oh, okay. You're, you're talking about another section, is what you're saying?
C, section C.
Okay, can I go to the bathroom real fast before we get into that, sorry, I just.
Can you cross your leg?
We're done on that, I apologize. Y'all can keep going, just go, sorry.
If you wanna. Do you want me to bring it back when he comes, since he's the one that started that, or do you wanna talk anymore about it? I know it was, it was voted on, and it was approved, and I know we talked about that we can see how it goes and we can bring it back, but if you're asking to bring it back and not approve the process, then is that your motion to change it back, yeah?
Because even, even at one time, Judge, on eleven fifteen, Commissioner Hernandez submitted a, a, uh, discuss and consider returning the pro, the previous Commissioners' Court nomination to the voting process, you know, the way we had it before, and then we said, no, let's, you know, we said, let's try one more, let's try it one time, see what happens, and.
And I, you know, I.
Bring it back, you know.
I understand we said we would try it and see if it comes back, but I also understand that with this process, it gave us all more of, to me, it gave us more of a vote than just a couple of people deciding, and it doesn't, it gave us all a voice.
We, we're the same deciders for whatever it is, we, we're gonna decide anyway, but I'm just saying, it's, it's a simple, that, I mean, if I, and I'm, I still don't like the process of where you say, or we say, uh, well, you know, there's two people on the board, but, you know, in my turn, I said, well, I want one of those three people. He said, well, you can't, you have to vote for somebody else, why should I vote for somebody else, I don't wanna vote for somebody else. So, now, I'm being told how to vote, you know, and, and if I wanna vote for one of those three, my name should go next to, that's one of those three. Whether they give him two votes or not, doesn't make any difference, I mean, we're not, why are we gonna have five, we don't need five? You know, I just think the process, uh, the way, I mean, it was, the three votes is three votes, just, you know, no doubt about it. And when people come over here, they know the process is three votes, you know, and, and they come up here, they can talk, whatever, but, you know, as far as, you know, I, and I got a lot of feedback as far as on this, and a lot of negative, a lot of, you know, this is the game we're playing, and all this sort of stuff, and, you know, but, and I just, I think it's time, I, I think it, we should just go back to the normal, you know, I mean, you got four applicants, then you look at all four applicants, let them speak, and, and then we decide, we vote like we always voted before for the last sixteen years, and that I've been hearing, that created a problem, so, um, but, you know, I just, that's my, my, my opinion on that. You know, people, when they apply, they know, they, they gotta convince three people, you know, and that's what it's all about, and I don't, however you look at it.
And these really high-profile ones, I think having a process helps us to be more open and, it's, I, you're what?
They're all high-profile to me.
But I, I, I also think having a process outlined like this, that, you know, becomes public, people can see it, it gives us more openness about it, instead of these decisions being made in back rooms before we even get out, I think it, it keeps the process clear.
No back room, we're here in the front, we're here in open court, I mean, back room, I mean, it's not that.
Could you bring forth a, like, we, we worked on that, this thing for months, everybody didn't put.
Oh, you did.
Well, no, you did too, Joe, and that, oh, baloney, I talked to you about it, you were in here, you voted for it, with all due respect.
We would assumption that we're gonna come back and come back.
Okay, so then bring another proposal, other than just going back to where we were, which was, who can make the fastest motion, no interviews? No, I'm, I'm saying, the process wasn't open, I, I got the exact opposite feedback that you did, that it was the most open process anybody had ever seen. If it needs to be tweaked, I'm open for suggestion, but, like, to just say, let's go back to how it was, it, it's a totally back room, people meet with people to say, you don't have meetings with, like, that happens all the time, to say that that's not going on, that you're not meeting with people behind the scenes is, is an inaccurate statement, because people call, I don't, I don't meet with them, because I decide, look, I'm not gonna do it, but that doesn't mean you can't, I'm not saying that's wrong, but just to say, let's go back to what, we, we didn't have a process before. Like, it was literally, who could make the fastest motion, we didn't have any interviews, it was all backroom cuts, deals, no, it wasn't.
They come up here and they're spoken, they said what they wanted, why they wanted to be part.
We didn't do that, no, we didn't.
We did it this time with this.
This was the only time we did it, we did it with the sheriff, and we didn't do it with any other time, we've never done it, it was just nominate and go, nobody spoke.
But it is the fastest person the other way, which is really not fair to, I mean, I think this covers everybody, where everybody gets a name in the hat. This, instead of one person making a nomination, somebody's seconding him, we gotta vote right then, and then nobody else gets it.
Why am I gonna put it in the hat, just because he wants to be in the hat, you wanted, wanted it to be in the hat?
Just come, come up with a, come up with something.
If my, if my, if my number is up there already, because somebody else had that same number, or wanted the number, why am I gonna vote for number five? I didn't want number five, if I would have won number five, I would have, I would have put number five.
But why shouldn't we all have the opportunity?
Why should I put number five up there when I didn't, I didn't even want number five up there?
You didn't have to.
Yeah, I did, you said.
No, you could have said nobody.
You got, you, no, you said, no vote at all?
Every Commissioner has the opportunity, or Judge has the opportunity, to nominate, to nominate someone, or not, you don't have to nominate anyone.
But I wanna vote, I wanna vote, I wanna nominate somebody.
Right, so you can.
You got, you did.
Somebody you tell me to nominate, because somebody's already has the one I want, and you tell me.
Nobody told you, nobody told you what to do, I, let me tell you, nobody tells Joe Gonzalez what to do, like, come on.
Commissioner, you're saying it right here.
It has to be a different name, if someone else already puts your name of your person, you had to put a different name, because all five of us get different names.
We'll change that part.
But then you're going back to the same thing.
We need to look at it again and look at what.
If you wanna put the same name up twice, you can't.
Now you're telling me what I have, what I can do, what I have to do, and that's not right, I mean, if I, I tell you what, I don't care how we do it, but if a name's up there that I want, I wanna vote for that name, I mean, you wanna throw it out, it's up to you, but I'm just telling you, if I'm gonna vote the way I wanna vote, but, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna let somebody tell me how I'm gonna vote.
Nobody told you.
I think, I think what Commissioner's saying is, y'all were deleting people that were in the group, when they came up, and we put their names down, and they only got one vote, so you said, well.
You got two votes, you got to vote for two.
Well, yeah, you gotta vote for two, right, but.
Separate, was separate two.
A separate, you can't vote for two votes for the same person.
Vote for the same person twice.
That's not right, no, no, I can't vote for the same, separate, he can't vote for him, and I can't vote for him too.
Right, and you did.
No.
You did, you voted, you two voted for the same guy.
Thing was, you cannot vote, that person cannot have two votes of, one round, the first round, that was the whole thing.
No, can't be nominated.
You didn't have to vote for the person's name that you put on the list, you could vote, in fact, yes.
The fact he didn't, Robert nominated someone and didn't vote for who he nominated.
Exactly.
I had no choice.
Yeah.
What do you mean, you had no choice, you were the first vote.
Because, no, because they told us already, he's already up on the board, so who cares? If he's already on the board, I still wanna vote for him, I'm gonna vote for him.
He wasn't on the board, he was the first one to nominate, Commissioner.
I nominated, okay, and y'all said the person was already on the board, and.
No, no, you nominated, you tried to vote, you tried to vote for someone who wasn't on the board, you nominated Ken Berry, and then you tried to vote for John Valls, who wasn't on the board.
No.
That's what you did, I remember.
Well, yes, after, after I lost my nomination with Ken Berry.
You didn't lose it, you didn't vote for him.
Well, because y'all said that, uh, he was out because he didn't get enough votes, or, you know.
He, when he didn't get the first one, he was still on the board for you to vote for, yes.
Like, you, you nominated, and then you didn't vote for it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, this is how confusing this, this thing is, that we just go back, like Commissioner, uh, says, just go back and we vote up or down, wherever we want.
I mean, it's just so simple, I mean, because people know, they're grown up, you know, they know, they know what they come here for, I mean, it's not like, you know, play, try to play a game and eliminate, and spin the bottle and eliminate, and, you know, so.
Yeah, but why would we wanna, but it's, you think, but I think everybody ought to have the opportunity to, to put a person on the board and at least have them considered. I think everybody ought to have that opportunity, the old system didn't allow that.
Commissioner, if I, if I wanted somebody, and you already put him up there.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, my concept is this, and this is where this came from, I think, everybody, and, and we can tweak this, if this isn't, like, good, right? But I think everybody ought to have an opportunity, you, everybody ought to be able to say, I wanna put this person on the board, and we vote for him, up or down. But not just, okay, Robert makes the fastest motion, I make the fastest second, we don't have any discussion, there's no interviews, that's, 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 that's what I'm trying to avoid. That's like backroom politics, if, if you wanna put someone up, and we all consider them, and if there's a different way to do this, but, that's all I'm saying, this whole started from, I think all of us ought to be able to put a name on the board, and, and have them considered.
Can't do it that way.
You should, of course you can, that's how we used to do it at the city.
Because if Commissioner Hernandez or I, or Commissioner Ramadas or I, or you, want the same person to be number one...
You're gonna get three votes on the board?
Wait a minute, Commissioner, if you want, we want, say, for instance, you and I want the same person. And, and so you're gonna say, who are you nominating? So you come before me, you nominate so-and-so. All right. So I, my next, I'm not, I wanna nominate the same one you nominated.
Okay, then, if you wanna change, if you wanna, right, but then you're gonna vote for him anyway.
Right, but no, but why am I gonna put so-and, uh, so-and-so up in there? I mean, come on, it's not even, he doesn't even have a chance, and, you know, because he, just to put him on the board, make him look good.
But you nominated the person you wanted to nominate.
You know, this, no, you nominated him.
I didn't nominate.
Now, now I can't. I'm just saying, this is...
Oh, in your scenario. I, I don't understand what you're, why you're saying, everybody can't put a name on the board if they want to.
It doesn't work that way, because we all don't have a name. If I don't want that name...
Your, your motion right now is to do away with this process, and you have a second on the floor of your motion.
That's why, that's why I'm here.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Commissioner Ramadas is good here.
Yeah. I mean, if you wanna push it off, we can wait till he comes back.
We can wait till he comes back, or whatever, but I, I can't support this right now without something else that works for us.
We're not substituting it with anything.
If you wanna bring something back that maybe works better, but right now, it's just, to me, I don't have a voice, because it's, I'm the one announcing. I usually try not to be the one to make the motion, because I'm the judge calling out the motion, so I'm the one that doesn't get a voice in here. So I can't support this not having some type of process.
There's gotta be...
Come up with a process.
But you supported that when you had the process. I mean, you spoke in, in favor of it.
Well, we all did.
We all...
It's not like you don't have...
Boy, Commissioner Ramadas is back, so Commissioner...
All we're saying is, what, what are you wanting substituting it for?
No, no, Commissioner, just the way that what, the process, it wasn't broken, so, I mean, maybe there's another way we can look at it, you know, I don't know, maybe there is. But any way you look at it, if a person already is up there, is nominated, and he's got another vote from me, say, for you put, you put him on there. I, I, I say, I don't, I don't have nobody else. I wanna wait for the same person you did, because that's my nomination. But you had him in your mind, the same nomination, so why am I gonna put somebody that I didn't even think of putting a nomination on the board, just because...
That's what I'm saying. So if you wanna tweak it, in other words, the process we had was whoever could... Yeah, like, come back with a process, not just eliminate something that we all worked on for several months, of which you were completely involved in. You, you're, the interviews was your...
We're against it all the time.
You were against it, but you voted for it?
No, I don't know, because she just said, let's try it one time.
And, and so now we're having a discussion?
So it didn't work that one time.
Well, for you, it didn't work.
No, to a lot of people, it didn't work. A lot of people had complained, like, you know, and it just got some complaints too, you know, and then...
But that's why I think I can't vote for just doing away with it, because I don't feel like I have a voice either. I think you bring something back with tweaks, and then we'll replace it.
Come back with a proposal, and let us vote on a proposal.
There, there actually is no way that I can think of, Commissioner, other than, because it's not gonna fall away. You know, you got three people up there, they're nominated, and if you, two of those, you don't want...
Right, I, I didn't, the people I voted for didn't go get on.
My people didn't get on either.
No, I mean, none did.
No, I, I go.
But no, but I understand they got on there, but there was, I mean, there was the last ones to vote on, right? But, you know, but let me, let me tell you, if, if, just say, for instance, Hernandez puts the vote out, the, Matisse puts one up there, you put one up there, it's three. Right, so I say, wait a minute, well...
Then we might as well not even ask y'all what you want. That's what we're trying to get away from.
No, no, they're separate, they're separate ones. And my, and I say, wait a minute, well, Matisse already put the guy I wanted, so I'm not, I'm not gonna put somebody else that I want on the board.
That's what I'm saying, so change it that way, say that you don't have to put somebody up if you don't want to.
You could...
But I wanna give my vote to the one he has, because that's the one I want, right? I mean, so now he has two votes, and there's one more left. So, I mean, and then we come back and if that's the case, then we come back and vote again, and we have to.
I, I think there's, there's very little agreement here. Does it need some work? Do we need to work on something else? Yes, but I don't think we have a plan to move forward to agree, other than your only plan is to vote this down, and you have a motion for it.
Let's get working something up.
You have a second. I, I would like to see something come back with a better plan before we just do away with it. I, I understand there's some hiccups, but...
Put this on hold until we find something else.
I, well, I think it is the process right now, until we find something else, and it stays like it is, until we have a better plan in place.
Well, I'm, I'm...
Unless you're making...
Judge, regardless of what it is, I'm just telling you, for the record, if I don't like, if I'm not gonna have nobody, I wanna vote my vote, and you guys wanna throw it out, you throw it out.
And that's, no, that's an easy change. You just say, not everybody has to put one up there.
But I'm just telling you, because you're not...
That would be a change, I feel.
If my guy has already been nominated, I'm gonna nominate him too. So you say, for, get somebody else hasn't been nominated, why should I get somebody else hasn't been nominated?
That could be a change that we could look at, but that's not just doing away.
He's saying, if you have two votes, it's going back to the same original plan. You can't, I mean...
No, I'm just saying, other than...
You don't have to put someone on the board if your name is already up there, but you have the opportunity.
Yeah, but I have to vote, but I have to vote.
You do.
And if I vote for that one up there, he's gonna have two votes.
Yes, that's how the people got in last time, because the name's on there.
That ended, it was a totally different...
And we all know that people come in, and they lobby us.
Yes.
So, uh, how are you gonna fix that? I mean, that's how you get to know people, and that's what you want.
Well, you should talk to them.
I don't think there's anything wrong with people lobbying, you know, I mean...
You can't, you can't say anything wrong either, but...
I, I, I hope nobody says that, and we wanna know who we're appointing by ourselves.
I said, I said, anybody can do whatever they want with it, but to say that things don't go on behind the scenes, that's what you said, that's an inaccurate statement. People meet with us all the time on different things. I mean, that's right, so there's nothing, and there's nothing, and I said, and there's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong, because how else are you gonna get to know people? I either, I either meet with everybody, or I meet with no one. That's, that's how I do it. On, on the Port deal, I met with anybody who called me, just like other people did.
Are you continuing with your motion? Are you pulling, withdrawing your motion until you can come back with a better plan? Or is your motion still just to do away with this portion of it?
Well, my motion probably would be to hold this until we find a better plan.
To continue, we have to have a plan. This would stay as the policy, because it's already been voted in as the policy unless...
But it was just, but it's like Commissioner says, we voted in with the agreement, if we didn't like it, we could bring it back.
And that's his motion right now to cancel it. That's the motion on the floor, to cancel this, and you second the motion, that's why I was asking.
Find something better.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to cancel this portion of the appointments process. All those in favor say aye. Oh, go ahead.
Judge, I'm sorry, real quick, yeah, I wanted to comment. I, I agree, is it maybe the best process, but I don't want to not have a process as imperfect as it is, that at least we understand.
But it changes.
And I don't think that it's a good policy to, to change anytime a vote comes up. So I think the longer we know this is the process, then we know the rules to go by, rather than something that, that's created, you know, weeks or months in advance. I, we at least know how this process worked, whether we like the outcome or not. I, I would not want to just eliminate it and not have a process. I, I, I'm totally in favor if Commissioner Gonzalez or Commissioner Hernandez have a, a, a way to present it and bring it to us, so that we can look at it. I'm all in favor of that. I won't be in favor of changing it to, or eliminating today and not have anything in place. That's, that's my own, that's my only concern.
You're already saying that you, you wanna keep the process as is.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, until we get another, an option B.
No, option B.
An option B presented, so we can say, here they are, what do we think? And who knows, maybe we come up with an option C out of some combination of those two. And, and also, I've mentioned this before, when we last looked at this policy, which was, uh, there are other entities in our area, cities and other elected bodies who have appointment processes, and so if we can look at how they do it and come back, maybe we can have several options to look at and say, this is how they do it, which one do you want, or which one you think works best? But for me, it's, I'm, I just wanna make sure that we, we and any applicant understand what the process is, so that there's no confusion. Because I think that there was, the, I think there was confusion during the port appointment. And, and so that, I don't want everyone, anyone to ever doubt that the process is not clear, and under, you know, that the public can understand, that the court can understand. So I, if, if we could table this, maybe we just table it and not have to kill it, right? And then allow some time just to do some research, and then come back and come up with two or three other options or more. I would be more favorable to look at that, rather than to say, let's kill it. Because I don't, I think that also gives just a bad message, that what y'all are suggesting is bad or wrong.
I don't mind table it.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Withdrawing your motion, and, yes.
Or we could just table...
Until you bring it back, and, and then when you come up with a better plan, then come back.
Maybe something in the first meeting in August, or...
But right now, this is the plan that is in the Nuasis County policy, and...
And we don't have any other, I mean, we don't really have any appointments coming up, do we?
No, so there's time to review this and work on it, but right now, the policy stands, you're just bringing it back with other options.
Maybe, I mean, I don't know if tomorrow, or next week's too quick of a turnaround, but maybe, maybe the first meeting in August. And if you have, like I said, I think cities and other elected bodies, school boards and others, to look at what they do, how they do it. And it may be just as simple as what you're saying, just throw out a name, hey, well, the name's already on there, that counts as a, a vote in favor. Or we, we don't all have to, or not feel like we're forced to put two names, even though we don't want to put in two names, only we wanna put in one. And that's very clearly stated. I just, I'd rather the process be very clear for everyone to understand. That's, that's what I'm shooting for.
We just table it whenever you're ready to bring it back, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Well, it's not on there, it's just a clarification. If there's no motion to do that, you just, whenever you get it ready to come back, you just put it on the agenda. Because that was, it's already in the policy, it's already been voted on in the policy, so there's, you're just withdrawing your motion until you come back with a plan, correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
So, Judge, excuse me.
Yes.
This morning, we voted on two board members, right?
Yes.
So, they got on.
Well, the one board appointee had resigned, but just got back on, but...
But it's different, we've only set this up for four boards.
It's very different. This is only for, for major appointments. I think the hospital districts, bond, RTA, and the port, those four, I think were the only ones, very coveted positions, yes.
It says that in here. It's just for those four.
Yeah. Um, any other, any, anything else, Commissioner?
Uh... Commissioner's gonna...
He withdrew his, and, yes.
But it'll come back?
Yes, he can bring it back. Moving on to item number sixteen, discuss and consider upcoming Commissioners' Court meeting dates. I would like to add, August the fourteenth, a workshop for our grants, COs, hospital district, ARPA workshops, so that the, going into budget, we have all of those amounts that the county is like, is obligating ourselves to, so everyone is aware of what we're doing. Is anyone, August the fourteenth, it's a Wednesday, we have Commissioners' Court on the seventh and the twenty-first, it'd be the Wednesday in between, and I thought...
I'm sorry, tell, so, say that again, Judge, what, what is it for, August fourteenth?
It's a workshop to prepare for budget. It just gives us our grant totals, what the county's obligations are, different amounts. Hospital district, it gets us up to date. Some of the meetings we've been in, we have found there are, um...
Was that the one we, that, I think?
ARPA workshop. No, we're doing the twenty-second, that's the budget workshop with department heads.
Wait, okay, I'm sorry, so, right, but the, the fourteenth was the one that we were gonna do, just in the morning, right, for that one, I think?
Uh, it shouldn't, uh, did they send an email? Did y'all send a request around, Teresa?
Just in the morning.
Yeah, I mean, I got stuck there after.
It shouldn't.
The hospital district will probably be sooner, just on their regular agenda, just the grants, ARPA, and capital projects.
Grants, ARPA, and capital projects, where we have...
Nine to noon kind of thing, 'cause I, that's what I said, I had a conflict. Okay.
But we need to know where we are and what the county's obligations are on those, how much the balances are too, so everyone is fully aware, yeah.
Da bueno.
Thank you. Um, do we, do we need a vote on that? Okay, I'll make the motion to add the, uh, August fourteenth, nine to noon, special meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Uh, moving on to item B one, discuss and consider the execution of a termination agreement to contribute funds. Um, text dot, they are closing out this one on, um, two eighty-six project. I think that's all this is. It doesn't mean we're terminating all of them. They can still send us an invoice in the future. This is one project. I will make a motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number two, discuss and consider a funding source for approval of a request for the Department of Public Works to purchase waste pumps from Odessa Pumps, eighteen thousand. We have a motion, I'll second that motion as well, but I also instructed, it's not on here, not rooted correctly, but because the, um, building superintendent budget has no more money, I think you sent a list to the office on some items that are gonna be necessary. I think on the next meeting, you need to come in and request those additional funds and things. I, I think also, there may be some questions on, you know, where the funding has gone, because your funding wasn't cut last budget either. So if you could provide all of that when you come back, but this is a necessary item. They don't, they don't have, they're using a temporary pump, we don't have backup if that goes out. So this sat on hold from June to now, because it should've been brought in for Commissioners' Court approval, because there was no funding source. So, just for clarification, so we have a motion and...
Excuse me, it is a transfer from general fund.
Yes, it, everything out of there, anything else will be general fund, yeah. All those in favor say aye.
You can use ARPA for that? You can use ARPA for that?
Yeah, no, there's, it has to have bids and projects, and it's, they need it quickly, and that kinda stuff, so...
Procurement.
Yeah, procurement processes.
Pain in the bed, yeah.
Did you get that? I did vote, right, okay, good. Correct me, stop me. Um, item C one, discuss and consider conditional selection, oh, sorry, thank you, one, yes. Conditional selection of Anchor for engineering services for Packery Channel Nature Park Habitat Creation and Public Access.
So moved, Judge.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Judge, just wanna call your attention to Aaron Harin from Anchor QEA.
Oh, thank you.
Came to visit today, and we'll be getting Scott Cross with him to negotiate that contract and come back, probably around the August twenty-first date.
Perfect. We appreciate you being here too, thank you. Um, item D one, I am making a motion to table until the next meeting. We went ahead and added it. The auditor's office asked us to wait to put it on, but the Commissioners all received theirs, so I didn't want to table. Uh, I didn't want to not put it on the agenda, but since Lisa and Dale, neither one are here, I don't want to, they can't answer the questions, so...
Second.
We have a motion and a second to bring back on the twenty-fourth.
Excuse me, Judge.
Yes.
I just wanna make a little comment. I don't think it's right to have both heads of one department, in this case, the auditors, out at the same time.
Agree.
I agree.
Unless it's an emergency.
Unless it's an emergency, yes, so, but we'll pass that on. But we have a motion and a second to bring this back on the twenty-fourth. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number two, approve budget amendment number nine for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And Deanna, are you going to do that, or is there anything in here for us to...
I can't hear.
In the microphone.
Are you here? Okay. Looking at this budget amendment number nine, I don't see any issues. It's just regular general fund transfers.
I didn't see anything, Judge, so I'd make a motion to pass this one, but would echo what Commissioner Hernandez said.
Yeah, I'm, I'll second that motion, echo that motion, that other comment as well. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item E, human resources. This was brought up after our, um, special meeting, discuss and consider approving a method of procurement request for proposals for the Nuasis County Employee Self-Funded Group Health Program, and that was what we were instructed to advise Michael Robinson to start working on this, so that next year, we have different options. I think this is the process. This is not for this year, this will be for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Correct.
Yes, so, just clarifying for everyone.
This is just, this is just putting the formal words down that the court instructed us to work on, so...
I will make the motion to pass, approve those, yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. And we didn't pass anything up, have to come back to it, did we, guys? And we didn't pass anything up and have to come back to it, did we guys? I think we're good.
Executive.
So going into executive session, public notice is given that the Commissioners' Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there's been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any listed agenda items in executive session when authorized by law to do so. In the event, the Commissioners' Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act, authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer. In accordance with the authority of the Government Code, Vernon's Texas Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.073, 551.074, 551.0745, 551.076, 551.086, 551.087, the Commissioners' Court will hold an executive session to consult with our attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices and/or economic development negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of executive session, the Commissioners' Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on the items discussed in the executive session. Item A today is consult with the county attorney and outside legal counsel on legal matters relating to cause number 220 CV 00263, David Longoria, on behalf of the estate of David Johnson, deceased, for versus Oasis County. And that is 551.071. Discuss, consider and take action in regular session if needed. Item B, consult with the county attorney on legal matters related to cause number 2022, CCV dash 61163 dash 3, Manuel Mata versus Oasis County and the County Court of Law, Number 3 of Oasis County, and related matters. 551.071. Discuss, consider and take action in regular session if needed. Item C, consult with the county attorney on legal matters related to the January 28th, 2023 claim of Juan Pimentel and related matters. Texas Government Code 551.071. Discuss, consider and take action in regular session if needed. And it is 1117 and we are going to executive. Okay, it is 1242 and we are back from executive session. Um, I will accept a motion on item A.
Yes, Judge, I make a motion to approve the settlement in cause number 220 CV 000263, David Johnson individually and on behalf of David Longoria, deceased, v. Javier Zapata et al. in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Texas, and approve all related settlement documents and release, and mutual release with well path subject to final execution by the appropriate well path representative on or before August 12th, 2024, and authorize the county judge to execute all related documents and authorize the issuance and release of an expedited check in the amount of $600,000.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Judge, real quick, that just had, that did have the language in there about, uh, contention upon well path signing, right?
He read it, yes.
Yeah, just, that's all. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Um, moving on to item C, do I have a motion for C?
Judge, my motion is to approve payment of $5,531.98 to Juan Pimentel. This is a settlement for all past claims, contention on full execution of all settlement and release documents and authorize issuance of payment once all documents are executed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I am going to oppose this and let me be clear, I was fully supportive of this the first time it came around. I fully supported it then. The only reason I am against this is the length of time and it being brought back to us, so. But the motion passes, four to one. And do we have any other business? Any adjournments in memory?
Judge, just a mention, I, I'm going to say, we don't have any obituaries, but I didn't feel like it was appropriate not to at least, um, uh, mention the Ocker and the Hunt families and the devastating tragedy in Port Aransas this past week. And I, we will wait to read those obituaries at the next meeting, but did want to at least mention those families and keep them in prayer.
Absolutely.
And, and.
Please go ahead.
Are you down, Commissioner? Okay, uh, yes, I just want to mention the passing of, uh, the sister to, uh, our 13th Court of Appeals Justice Gina Benavides.